Did you happen to see the process?
Yeah.
Do you have a BLC team?
Yeah. Is that the one you ordered?
Yep, that's what I need to know.
Okay, we're calling the meeting to order at, you ready? We're calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM on August 19th at the town garage. A motion to adopt the agenda, I would like to add between 11 and 12, an executive session for a personnel matter. That would be a change to the agenda.
So who?
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor to adopt the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have two minutes. The first minute of August 5th. Are there any additions or corrections to that, to those minutes? If not, we need a second.
Make the motion to accept the minutes as written and presented. Circle it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the minutes of August 5th as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then it was a meeting on Thursday, August 8th, where the, we postponed the town, here we have the town plan to October 17th, I believe. Do we have any corrections or additions to those?
Motion to adopt those minutes as written and presented.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the warrants were presented and signed. So there, that's all done. And now, we come to the petition for this special town meeting that was presented back on 7/19, I believe. We need to set, we need to set a date for this special town meeting. Do we have any suggestions on dates?
Is there anything available or any dates pertaining to the meeting space itself that are usable?
I didn't understand the question. What was it?
Is there what?
Looking for dates, were there dates that the gym or the school might be available to?
The dates, I can read them off, the dick, the school is not available in September 19th and 26th. And they're not, and other than that, they're available in October and November. David, if not available on, well, you pick a date and I'll tell him. Right now, it's September 3rd, 9th, 11th, 17th and 18th of September, October 9th, 16th and 14th. And in November, 5th, 11th, 13th and 20th.
I have no complaints.
Can I ask?
Sure, absolutely.
It's kind of a procedure question, but might help me understand the importance of dates. The pro, the process would be, as I understand it, there would be a special town meeting to debate and vote on the petition. If, if the vote was favorable to take the decision on the town plan and give it to the voters, the process then would be to have, not, not at that date. All you're doing at the first time is to set the ball of motion to have a second. At that time, you would vote in favor or not in favor of the plan.
No, no, of, oh, yeah, that's right, of the plan.
And.
And that would be at the regular annual week.
Could be, could be. And, as I understand it, the, if that was to happen, it would then be a vote on the plan as amended and as the select board put forth. This was the plan we are discussing. Currently, that's the only plan that can be voted in favor of or against, whatever. Am I right so far in the process?
Yes.
So, just trying to get my head around, is, is the date's important, is that sort of thing? If, if, if there is a favorable vote for the voters to vote on the plan, then that, that action could take place at town meeting when we have the best.
Right.
Okay.
Well, the original date that was set was October 17th, so we just want to stick.
No, 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 that's the hearing.
That's the hearing. That's a hearing.
That's the hearing in town plan.
That's, that's right, that's, you're absolutely right.
The question we now need is, when do you want to have the special town meeting to decide whether the town will approve the town plan or it would stay as it is right now with the select board? And that could take place from now, anytime between now and, I guess, the first of the year.
So, as I understand it, the important thing is that we set a date and we have to set a date within 60 days of when we receive the petition. But we're not obligated to have that vote. I mean, we can, we can pick a date whenever we want that to be, but we have to decide when it's going to be within 60 days of when we receive the petition, am I correct?
Ready? I believe so.
Yes, that's correct.
So, since we are having a hearing on October 17th that could or could not decide the final plan, if there are substantial changes, then it would be put off another 15 days, is that right, Bill, before you warrant another public hearing?
Well, 15 days of public notice, so if you have that due, I can run the following Wednesdays, so 15 days from the following Wednesday.
Right, so, and then, then, and that could continue on. So, it might, you might want to have this special time meeting sometime in November. I would assume that, I mean, that's just my thoughts. I would assume that between October 17th and some other date. I don't anticipate the plan being approved on the 17th, but I think we should get close to it. Would you want to have the plan, have the special time meeting after, after that? That's saying more logic to me, but that's just my opinion.
I don't know, really, the, the date in particular doesn't really, I'd just pick a date and go with it. Whether it was before or after, it doesn't really affect anything the way I see it.
I don't really have any conflicts for myself for any of the dates, so I guess it's a matter of.
Someone's got to pick a date. Yeah, I'm thinking in November, but I.
I would stay on day and.
No, I don't.
I would stay away from Mondays and Wednesdays. Don't.
Wait a minute, no, I have, I have this schedule.
Yeah, if you're going to November 5th, 11th, 13th and 20th, David will not be affected. All right, how about, it's worth the opposite direction. Give us good days, not bad days. Anything else? One, two, three, no, not one, four, five, six, seven, four, six, seven.
When does the select is meeting?
12, 13, 14, 18, 19, 21, 25, 26, 28, 28 is Thanksgiving. How about we not, the week of the 25th according to Amber? And she's right, so 18, 19, 20, 21, 12, 14.
Why don't we do, why don't we do.
Four, six, seven.
12, 13, 14, 15 of November.
12th or 14th, 14th is a Thursday, the 12th is a Tuesday.
Either one.
Do the 14th.
Do the 14th.
Okay. So, November 14th.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, somebody make a motion.
Make a motion that we have a special town meeting to vote on the request of the petition we received. And that date would be November 14th.
Yeah, and I would, I clarify that to say, the petition was for the, shout the voters of the, of graft and adopt and amend the municipal plan by Australia Bill. Okay, that's what the, that's correct.
I'll second.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you want to check too with Dave Ross for our moderator?
He has the dates, so.
Your date, oh, I thought you got Dave's. Okay.
Bill checked with, with Dave to see what available dates he had or not had.
Should we walk the time in, or should we walk out of the time in?
Yeah, initially, it's at 6 o'clock, right?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, yeah. Okay, so if there is no further discussion, all in favor of having these.
Who was the second?
Standing. That's how the, we'll have the special time meeting on November 14th at 6:00 PM at the school. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Danny, you're up now for the highway, and I guess we're doing the bids as well.
Yeah.
Josh, you are, Danny, you want to go first or you want to do the bids first?
You can do the bids.
Okay. And Joshua, you have.
Turner Hill bids will open up first. First one is for Igor Stevens. An estimate of $15,000 even. Second one, Jamie Gregory. $16,800. Last but not least, I'm going to assume P and L Trucking is looking at Palmer. And $14,995.
Are you awarding them tonight? There's only the three that showed up for it, so.
We can't, we cannot.
I think, because we put a deadline when we'd like to get it done by, so rather than waiting a week to award it, they all were told the same thing right on the site, so.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Does anybody have a problem with the award tonight?
Do we have the insurance papers with anybody, or?
I have insurance papers for everybody at Palmer. I don't think I have Palmer's, I might even have Palmer's, but I don't think I have. I get it.
Yeah.
I have all.
Is it a one, two, and paper book?
I mean, we, I, we try to make that as part of the package, that insurance is sure included as part of the package.
I don't know that it was written.
I don't think so.
Well, in, in the policy, that's the way it's written.
Well, in the policy, but if it's not written, it in the bid and they say you have to have it, I don't think it's fair to.
No, no, it isn't that, I disagree, that's, that's the way our policy is written and we have.
It should have been in the bid.
Yes.
Well, we can, if, if you accept the bid and it's not here, it's going to be, the subject should be subject to a certificate presented to the town administrator ASAP before any work starts.
I, I have no problems, I'd go with a little bidder. I mean, it's $5 difference, but.
Make a motion, we accept the little bid as presented contingent of proper insurance paperwork.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, just curious, Danny, you're talking about time, do you want to make sure that?
They, they had all, that day.
You can read the timeline?
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
Have we had work done by P and L before?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, a lot during flood.
A lot during the flood.
We buy all our sand and stuff from them.
Any other discussion? So, let's have some big motion, we, oh, we did, so, let's, let's, let's take a vote. So, all in favor of P and L Trucking, $14,900, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excavators next.
First bid is from Nortrax. Looks like there's something, there's two, two different, two different bids within this bid.
Is one a John Deere and one a Hitachi, is that?
Quarter, now, quartered is a Hitachi 2019, Zax's 75 excavator with a 60-month 3,000. And quartered is a Hitachi 2019 75 excavator with 60-month 3,000 hour comprehensive warranty.
I don't know.
Numbers, are the numbers the same?
Is one a used machine or, or something?
Probably both the same, but it looks like there's a difference in the, it's like there's a difference in the digging bucket. We'll go through the whole thing, but.
Might be in the options.
Yeah, I'd say those would be, but, again, take a look at those.
36-inch quick fill bucket option, please add $23.99. Preventive maintenance package adds $7,000.
The bid was put out, so there's, there's different options that they had to figure into it.
Machine quartered with Craig attachments and warranty, there's a difference. Machine quartered with Craig attachments and warranty, $135,000, $135,000, $135,000. Machine quartered with Geith attachments and warranty, $127,300. Monthly lease payment without options included on the first one, $2,479.15. Monthly lease payments without options included in the second one, $2,334.95.
Just so we all know, this is a lease, correct?
Lease.
Well, not mine.
So, lease down.
Lease down, yes.
Is there an interest rate on any of those that they've quoted?
Interest?
Interest?
It's, I'm sure it's all figured into the.
Yeah, they should state what the interest is going to be in the plan.
So, they have John Deere too?
Down the ball. We'll pull it on, on the touches.
He also included the entire lease agreement if you were to enter it, so that he would know what the lease agreement would include if you, before you made a decision on, on accepting that. So, the entire lease agreement is there mostly. He told me that.
Is this the machine, Danny? Is this the machine you demoed?
Yes. The attachments, the, the cheaper machine, we didn't have them attachments. And they, he did call and ask if he could bid the Giel attachments, and I said, yeah, that's fine.
Wasn't there one you liked and one you didn't like?
The Hitachi. We only got to try two.
Yeah.
And that one was a Hitachi, one was a Kubota, and I don't think they even bid.
And do they give?
No, but I mean, as far as the, 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 the buckets and stuff, wasn't there something that you liked better than another?
The, the attachments that were on the Hitachi were better than the Kubota.
I don't think we're going to find interest rate on, on lease payment, because they don't, they don't work at what a lease, as an interest rate for leases. It's, it's an entirely different system, I forget what that's called, but it's, it is an interest rate, but it's not called an interest rate, but I'm not.
Do they give you a buyout figure too?
Buyout's a dollar at the end, it should be.
Well, we're not, we're not going to accept this.
We don't have a chance to adjust that, right?
Because the lease agreements for each company might be different.
Right.
You only had two beds, huh?
Yeah. Figured we'd at least have three, but.
Long story short, this is for CAT 307.5. $95,000 discounted list, list price. Add $2,500 for 36-inch fixed digging bucket, ditching bucket. Add $8,800 for 25-hour onsite service.
That, that, that's a big difference in the spread.
Yeah, it sounds like he broke out the servicing of and everything out of the price where Nortrax figured it in.
Correct. Yeah, we had that all together. We're still, still seeing what it was. Have you tried this cat?
They didn't have one, they don't know when they have one in. So, they're buying something just by your saying. It doesn't, it's nowhere near the same as the specs that we put out, but we knew they wouldn't be, each machine is so different.
Well, I guess that's something you're going to have to evaluate and take a look at and then.
See, it doesn't say what he's even putting on for equipment.
You got to look at a CAT though in another town, right?
Yeah.
And that was the same model, but it's not.
The machine itself.
Same machine.
But not the attachments.
Right.
Exemptions to your specifications, in your specifications under the general section, you say the machine shall have a tail swing radius of no more than six inches. CAT 307.5 has more than a six-inch tail swing. And your specs under the electrical section state the machine shall have a 900 coal cranking unit battery. The 307.5 has an 850 CCA battery. Your specs under fluid capacity, you state the machine shall have 3.2 gallon well capacity. CAT 307 has a 2.5 capacity. Your specs fluid capacity section, you say the machine has a 15 gallon hydraulic tank. 307 has a 14 gallon, there's, there's.
It's going to go on and on and on.
What's the, what's the bottom line?
Less money, less machine.
Right. But you got, you got to look at the lease con, the lease terms and make sure the warranties are the same.
Yeah, but that's something you're going to have to look at.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like we have two different ways we can go on the Hitachi and one way on this, but it seems like there's definitely some, some major differences between the machines.
So, he didn't actually bid?
Uh, no, he did.
What's the bottom line?
Well, he broke it out, was it $95 for the machine?
Oh, I thought there was a discount he was saying.
That is the, that's the machine with the discount.
$95,000.
Then you got to add.
But then.
Yeah, right. Right.
You have to add $11,300 onto that.
Yeah, at least, unless there's something else in there.
We had, which, like I said, you get in options at $2,500 for the 36-inch fixed ditching bucket, add $8,800 for the, for the 25-hour onsite service. My understanding, Towne Grafton, which is the lease purchase, the hydraulic excavator. Caterpillar Financial offers municipality's low rates up to seven years. Municipality can leases, can be stretched with monthly, quarterly, semi-annual or annual payments, both upfront and arrears, I have provided you below with payments for five, six and seven. Year upfront lease purchase payments based on the $95,000. I'd be more than happy to provide you with lease purchase payments on any other items, any other term you desire when it gets into the five, six or seven year, and all the, all the things that doesn't meet the specs.
Well, you'll have to pull. Is there anything else, Danny, you want to talk besides the bids?
Uh, no, we're gonna, we're hauling, we're hauling the stone in for the Turner Hill project. Getting that, so we have it, so they start, we, we got a pile of it down there. Um, we have the coverts and I got to get the headers for it.
Want to tell everybody about the Chester Hill covert?
Oh, so, yeah, last week, the EJP did the slip lining on Chester Hill, right there at the bottom of 119 feet, where they actually slid a plastic covert inside the existing covert and then they pumped grouting around it, so they were done on that, with that on Wednesday. Started Tuesday, finished Wednesday. Um, Jamie finished up Wednesday night. Just the, the outlet, we had to put some more wrap in the outlet, but I thought it went really well. Kind of neat to see how it's done.
Fascinating, actually.
The last 20-foot piece went pretty hard. If you had to put another 20 on it, that excavator would have probably pushed it through. It was, the last piece went hard, but it's pretty neat how, how fast it goes. What's time consuming is them actually hooking the pieces together. It takes the longest, they had one, they fought with like an hour, other ones were what, 15, 20 minutes? So, all depends how, you know, being plastic, some of them were oval when they showed up. So, they went together a little bit harder, but it was just pretty neat the way they do it.
So, they do all that without having to close the road then?
Yes, yep.
They have a $300,000 expense.
Yep, and they put 30 yards of grouting around it. Filled it 85%, it didn't quite fill all the way, they lost a lot in voids. So, they didn't get it quite full, but mostly the upper end and the very lower end, they thought was not quite full. So, 15, 20 years, you might see a little settlement in the road if the covert finish rotting out. But that's all done.
I was surprised how quick it went.
The signs back up and the flowers are put back. Guess that was a big topic.
Seated.
Yep, seated.
Danny, uh, Danny, or you? Okay, thank you, Danny.
Joe?
Oh, yes.
Just also on highways, you have the comments that I.
Oh, yeah, on the.
I'm just town attorney, you don't need to discuss, I'm just having, I just. And then the, in red is the answers in V-Trans. Basically, once you sign the agreement, it's all on V-Trans. Our, our cost is 10%, whatever it costs, and we don't have anything in, in excess of the 10%. The problem would be, we do have, if there's an overrun on the estimate, we do share 2% of that. Uh, but provided we do nothing, don't help them sweep up dirt someday or nothing, don't touch the thing. It's them, it's, it's the V-Trans and the contractor, including the right-of-way for the, the temporary right-of-way for the, for the temporary bridge, all that, they're doing the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay? But the, the two things, the exposure is the, as long as it's less than 50% increase from the estimate, we have to do the project, the exposure is a huge overrun based on, on the estimate. So, it could go as high as $600,000 and we can't get out, our share, and we can't get out of it. That's the exposure, and other than that, there isn't, everything is on them. There is, um, oh, there is one other thing. There is, uh, um, oh, there is one other thing, uh, and that is, if design is flawed, and because of that, there's damage caused to somebody, it's all on us. And, and, which is crazy because they designed it. But that's the way it is, and I tried to figure out why, and I don't know why. But our, our attorney just pointed out those things that, so you'd be aware when we go into it, uh, that those are the, those are the flaws. And, and VLCT said, yeah, it's all written in favor of V-Trans, there's not a thing you can do about it, it's their contract, I'm not gonna change it. So it's the same contract for every town. Every town, yeah, and, uh, so, uh, that's the, that's the way to just, there's, you know, those are minor, those are concerns, it can be major concerns, but probably are minor concerns because they don't very often happen, that there's a problem with it. But I would like a, your motion, you made a motion last time to approve the agreement, to, to sign the agreement, but you didn't name anybody to sign it. So, yeah, I need a motion for you to name somebody to sign the agreement. Somebody they made a motion, the chairman signs the agreement.
Someone.
Any other discussion?
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm glad you brought it up, that the thing number twenty-four is if it's, if the design of the bridge is bad, it's our problem. I really have problems with that one, I'll tell ya. That makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever.
She said, do they have any other, they won't write any of the, well, that's the only thing she didn't have, any of the.
Absolutely, that's.
Mr. Chair, is the ten percent called out in the contract also?
Uh, yes, yes. And it could be less than ten percent when the time comes, or it could be more, is that how you understand it, right?
No, but, no.
It said, didn't she say at the meeting that it depended on what the feds kick in?
It depended on which one, which, uh, one we, when you went to the very initial meetings, they were talking ten or twenty or whatever percent. It depended on which one we, uh, um, agreed to as far as whether or not we're gonna do the temporary bridge. With the temporary bridge, it's ten percent. This agreement locks it into ten percent, there's no difference.
The, one question I have is some contracts today, there's an incentive for the contractor to complete the job, um, ahead of schedule or, or tighten up the window. And, um, is there anything in the contract that, that might indicate they would come in under budget?
They, they stated that there is, that, that there is an incentive in their contracts with the contractor. We have nothing to do with that. Our contract is with V-Trans.
Right, but, but my point is, our ten percent is, is based on a number they determine or actual cost. It's, it's actual cost.
Whether there's an overrun or an underbunch, it's ten percent.
So, my point is, if the contractor is able to complete the work and it costs them less than they projected.
We'll get it then.
It will be to our advantage, so. I didn't see anything Bill, do we have a, do we have any say in the design?
No, other than you are gonna be, um, brought into the conversation. Uh, you, if you wanted to have the French bridge down at Highway Two, you can have that French bridge with the balls and the statues and all that. All, that's a hundred percent your cost.
Right.
Other than that, no.
Well, the reason we mentioned Saxon River, when they did the bridge, they didn't use galvanized guardrail and all that. They have a kind of a, it's a, kind of a black, I mean, do we have something other than just some high-powered, high-powered galvanized?
That I'm not sure, but most of their projects, if you see projects the state doing, they're, they're using that, and square that cost.
There you are now. All right, with a motion on the floor, um, to have he sign, have the chair sign, um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Bill, is that all we need to do on this?
Yes, and Richard, it's here, it, well, we can do it later, but, we can do it there. It's, I have the contract here.
Okay, we can do it later tomorrow whenever you want. Okay, Kim, it's you.
Um, discussion on property taxes. I'm hoping that within the next two weeks, we'll hear from Brad James from the Department of Education as to what, um, the additional education tax would be. Um, after having a lengthy discussion with Nemrock, who is our program designer for our taxes and our accounting system, um, it was brought to our attention when we were talking, they are gonna come in for the day and work on our computer system when it comes time to generate the new tax bills. Which means everybody's already paid the first quarter, so that would be three, four, second, third and fourth will be due, and they need to reevaluate, change the numbers for all of those to take into account what people have already paid and then what is actually due. That being said, typically by August thirtieth, if you've not paid your August fifteenth payment, August thirtieth, you get a one percent charge. September, you get another one percent, and actually October being the third month, it would be a one and a half percent charge. If we were to do that like normal, it would really create chaos for Nemrock to come in and try then to change the second, third and fourth quarter of people's payments when they've got interest automatically tapped on in the computer system. So they wanted the select board to be aware and get their approval, um, or actually I'm asking, um, and let you know that it would be, it would be beneficial for us not to charge the one percent for August, the one percent for September, and the one and a half for October, for those who have not paid their August payment. Because it's just, it's gonna create a huge headache. So I kind of was bringing that to your attention, hoping that I can actually, the motion, because it's voted on by the town, uh, in town meeting, the one and the one and a half, that I should probably think of having a motion that you agree that we're going to do away with that for the first three months of this year.
Because it's voted by the town, doesn't select board have the jurisdiction?
In this case, I would say you have the jurisdiction, or I can just make you aware that it would just create a nightmare, I said.
Shouldn't that payment still be made in August though? I mean, their, their basic payment still has to be paid.
They're supposed to be paid in August.
Right, but if they're late on that payment, then they're still late on, on the payment. It isn't like they're not paying it because they don't have the school tax out of them.
When we hit the button to charge them, now when Nemrock comes in to try to start calculating, and you've got an interest built into what somebody owes, and it's not just their normal next repayment, that's where it's gonna take forever for them to try to pull out what was an interest charge, but what was actually a principal charge.
Yeah, I think it's fair. Somebody paid their taxes on time, and somebody's not paying their taxes.
Well, that's so, that's foolish of this.
I don't think that's fair, quite frankly.
I mean, we still have to be able to run the town, whether the people are paying, paying their taxes or not. I mean, there should be some consequence of not paying the tax bill.
It's, that's totally up to you guys, but like I said, it would, it, they're just saying what the chaos it would create. It's bad enough, they're gonna be spending a day here, as it is.
What percentage of the people pay their taxes in quarter, in quarters?
It's really hard to say. I'm still getting a few dwindling in at answer, I could probably give you another week or two, but.
Just ballpark. Is it twenty-five percent of the people, is it fifty percent paying in quarters?
I'd say ten, maybe.
Ten percent pay them in quarters?
No.
Now, not how, I'm not asking how, I'm not asking how many are late, I'm asking how many people pay their taxes in the first quarter like they're supposed to.
I'd say ninety percent probably. And then even some of those pay them in full. So we've got many people that have paid in full.
So, to get to your question about running the town.
Oh, the town, the town is fine. I mean, we're just talking the one percent on somebody's one quarter.
Okay, so, so assume that the select board says, no, we wanna charge the taxes, okay, is Nemrock gonna charge us for this?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get an onsite charge.
So what's that gonna cost? Because if, if that costs a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars and the interest is only two hundred dollars, it doesn't make any sense.
You figure one percent on somebody's tax bill, that might be a five hundred dollar tax bill. You're only getting charged one percent, but then we're gonna pay out to Nemrock, and it will be, it will be a heavy charge for them to come for the day.
Well, I, I personally would like to get, find out what their charge is gonna be, and then get some estimate of, of, you know how many people are late already? And what is the, the interest, and, and then we can make a better decision at the next meeting, I mean.
Do you need to know, how soon do you need to know, Jim?
Uh, when's the next meeting?
Uh, September, well, well, it's Monday or Tuesday, I think it's probably gonna be on Tuesday, but.
Okay, well, August, I can wait until, um, wait and have Jan and not calculate August interest until after the September meeting, and then have her calculate just a few days later if you decide to calculate the interest. So I can wait till the next meeting.
But can we get some idea what it's gonna cost us?
I'll call Nemrock and I'll get some figures as to what it will cost them to come spend the day just to do what they gotta do.
And then maybe they can make some estimate, you can figure out how many, if you have only two people who are late.
By then, I'm gonna know, I'll be able to calculate how many people have not paid their August fifteenth payment.
Right, which is also helpful information for them.
So I can do that then.
Is everybody okay with that? To kind of figure out at the next meeting? Thank you, Kim.
And the bills will be, if, um, Jen, okay, that'll be fine. I'll just wait until September to send out the bills, even if I get them, probably, the rate prior. The sooner we get the notices out to taxpayers, taxpayers, the better. Um, your bills will be blue colored, so pass the word, so they're gonna be totally different. We're gonna ask everybody to please use the blue ones from now on, so when they come in with a white and red stub, it's gonna identify that you have the wrong stub, you're not paying your proper amount.
So the blue one will reflect their increase.
Exactly, it's gonna reflect the new rate and your new payment amount.
Makes sense.
So the payment in November's gonna have August increase in it too?
It'll have the increase, the November payment will have the increase.
It'll be spread out for the next three.
Next three, right. Nothing's gonna be due until November fifteenth. It'll just be an increase in your November next three quarters.
Oh, tell me about it, seven hundred more, escrows.
Okay, thank you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, is Tracy here? Are we gonna talk about the board?
Tracy is not here.
I don't see her, so, we just wanna pass this over or?
Well, I would, if, if, if there is some, has been some discussion with Tracy, then pass order me, but I'd like to have a, at the select board meeting, I'd like to have had Tracy discuss it with a subcommittee or something, and give an idea of what they're gonna do, so that subcommittee can bring something to the meeting, so we're not just having an hour talk on conjecture.
So at this point, all that's happened is Bill followed up our last meeting and talked to Tracy, and Tracy expressed that he would be interested to participate. That's all that's happened so far, correct? Would you like, would you like, would you like to meet with Tracy? Do you want somebody else to be with Tracy so you can, you can get some idea? And figure out what we can or cannot do, what is feasible and not feasible before we have, and then discuss that at the meeting rather than have Tracy come in? Have a committee before.
Shoot, the next meeting will be.
Well, it doesn't have to be next meeting, it could be, I mean, the edgeboard's not gonna go wet, doesn't make any difference.
No, I know, it's. The next meeting will be on the third, yeah. Um, I, I'd like to have Tracy here and allow everybody to, uh, hear the, the whole discussion at one time. So that, um, he gets to hear our concerns, um, I know mine are different than Stan's. Stan, Stan's like, well, if it's coming, it's coming, you know, it's like, what are we gonna do about it, you know? I, I get it, you know, but I'd like to have the whole discussion here with all of us and have Tracy participate. At the end of the meeting, when it's all said and done, he may say, wow, thanks, but no thanks, you know, it's like, I don't really wanna do that, so.
Well, he was supposed to have been here tonight.
You knew him, huh?
He's away.
All right, so why don't we just table this thing, so we have the other stuff, okay? Um, we need to appoint a representative to do, go for the VLCT annual meeting? Do we have any volunteers? And that is Wednesday, October second, at Killington Grand Hotel in Killington, Vermont. This is their, their business meeting, which is one to four. Isn't that also the?
It's town fair.
That's town fair as well, I guess.
Typically, we've always had Cynthia.
Cynthia's always gone, yeah, I don't know if she wants us to go, or if anybody else.
Um, unless somebody else steps up, I can always ask her, she's always happy to go, um, she's still my assistant, so she's still in the VLCT, you remember.
Does she ever give us feedback, other than that was a nice meal?
Yeah, it's always turkey though, I think, at the, at the town fair, so, but yeah, she does.
Yes, uh, their annual meeting is about one hour in the midst of the town fair, and it's about as interesting as a select board meeting. You know, what it, it is, well, actually, probably worse than that, because the only thing they talk about, they give an annual report, then they talk about, you've got in front of you, those amendments to their bylaw, and that's it. And it takes maybe half hour, or when do they have a good meal?
And, uh, the, the deadline is, um, September twentieth. So, why don't somebody think about it, talk to Cynthia and whatever, and I'll give this to Bill, and if you, anybody wants to go, Bill has it.
Hey, the town fair does have classes.
Well, the town fair is something else, but, I mean, you can go to the town fair.
Right.
There's a lot of interesting things.
You can just go to that, or go to the town fair at the same time, which is quite interesting, and different equipment and vendors and classes.
If you wanna go to the town fair, then maybe you wanna take an hour or twenty minutes off and go to the business. Okay, so, think about it, maybe somebody wants to go to town fair as well. I don't know what the deadline for town fair is, but, um, I hope you'll let you know.
Well, it would be the same deadline.
Okay. No, it's September twentieth. Um, we need to, believe it or not, budget time is coming soon. So I, I just put it on there, we don't have to pick a date now, but I think we need to start thinking about, and maybe Ken can give us some guidance here of when we wanna start the budget process for next year. I think last year we started it, was it October, I think?
End of July.
Yeah. So, just kinda thinking about it, maybe Ken, you can give us some, maybe set some time for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll start working on the worksheets that we typically utilize.
Get the worksheets going.
The worksheets, at least, I'll get to you in your boxes as soon as possible.
We can start thinking about it, you know, it's never too soon to start.
No, and I think it worked out well last year, um, and I think the main thing we were hinted on was like, um, health insurance, we had to wait for those rates to come through, so, um, and reviews. So that plays a big part as to when you're gonna plan your reviews to fall into the whole budget process. Yeah, it worked great last year.
Um, public comment, do we have any public comment today?
So, Mr. Chair, I have a brief update from the water study committee, would you like me to do that in public comment or another?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, public comment.
Okay, great. So, um, we reached a very important milestone in the water study committee. As many of you know, we did the drinking water test on August thirteenth and fourteenth, and, um, we invited seventy-three, um, of our residents to participate in the test. We had a goal of sixty sites and we achieved fifty-six tests. So it was really a, a very successful effort in terms of the broad representation we have of the village in the drinking water test. Our team visited each site and actually did the sampling for the test, and then managed the, what's known as the cust- chain of custody from the site to the shipment to the lab. So it was, we were trained and it was, uh, really, I think, very professionally done. So the first thing, and on behalf of our committee, we wanted to acknowledge and thank very much the people, uh, of the members of our community who volunteered to be part of the test. Because without them, we would not have achieved these, uh, these results. We're very grateful that, um, because we had fifty-six, we will have a broad sample, and that will, that will be of the, um, actual, uh, end report, the report that we're able to give because we have that broad sample. I would also like to thank our incredible water study committee, and. and I just wanna refresh everybody's, um, memory who they are because they were working so hard. We did these fifty-six tests in a day and a half, it was quite an undertaking. So the members of our committee are Paul Halick, uh, Kim Redbird, Matt Ciano, Chris Wallace, and ex officio Stan Mack. And we also had Meg Gonzalez join us for the test. And, uh, Rich Thompson, our new health officer, is now also participating. Not in those they had, but from now on. So where are we and what's next? We are in the test notification phase of the project. Um, and I just wanna remind everyone that the test results are communicated in two ways. The first way is directly with the individual participant and those communications take place with the Vermont Department of Health. And the second way is to our water study committee and those results are presented in aggregate form. So said differently, the test results for an individual resident are reported directly to that individual, but the compilation of those results are reported to the water study committee. So where we are is that each resident is now going to receive, within two weeks of the test, a report on his or her, uh, results from the Vermont Department of Health. In addition to that, um, the Vermont Department of Health reports any bacteriological positive tests to the participant within forty-eight hours of receiving the results. And as it turns out, we have had positive tests and there are people who are being phoned and emailed about that now. I want to just give you a little bit more background about what the committee now, in an aggregate level, knows about these positive bacteriological tests. The first thing I want to assure you is that no E. coli has been detected. That is an important key takeaway from what I'm saying. No E. coli has been detected. But there have been results of to- positive, uh, uh, results for what is known as total coliform. And total coliform is not a term we use every day, so let me just, um, describe briefly, double click on it, what that means. The bacteriological portion of our test is a either-or situation. So if you test positive, that means that some coliform was detected in the test. If you test negative, no coliform was detected. On or off, either or. So what has happened in these tests that have, in these participants who have received positive test results is that a positive detection has occurred. Now, what happens next? What happens next is what's called a confirmation test. So twenty percent of our participants are receiving calls and emails now. And, um, the twenty percent is completely within the normal range of these tests when they're conducted statewide. So let me just say that again and in a different way. On the first round of bacteriological tests that the Department of Health has conducted in villages all over the state of Vermont, the normal range for the retest phase that we're about to enter is twenty percent. And we fall right within that range. So no alarm bells are ringing here. There's no E. coli and we fall within the twenty percent range of the retest. This is all part of our process. We said from the beginning in the study committee that we were gonna let the data take us where it's taking us and the data are taking us where it's taking us and we're entering this round of confirmation tests. So while the notifications have taken place privately between the Department of Health and the individuals, our water study committee has volunteered to assist these sites with their retest. Now, keep in mind, as I said earlier, we've been trained, we know how to do this, we can, uh, assure that the, that the samples reach the lab within the proper turnaround time. So we are available to help. And the email that, uh, our participants are receiving, if they're affected by this, has Kim's name on it and says, if you wanna set up an appointment, call Kim and we'll be willing to help. And she's already received a couple of calls for this purpose. Keep in mind, everything done in a residential drinking water test is completely voluntary and up to the resident him or herself. There is nothing the state requires to do the retest, to not do the retest, to ask us to help, to not ask us to help. Everything is done on a voluntary basis. So now, let me just make sure that I've covered everything I wanted to cover up. So, um, in order to keep this momentum going, we, as the water study committee, volunteered that we would do these tests on August twenty-ninth and we would deliver the results to the lab on August twenty-ninth. So that would give us, that would put us in a position to receive the results overall sometime in September and then we'd be able to report back to the select board our, uh, report on the results of the test. This is just meant to be a where do we stand right now status report. So are there any questions?
So when you took the initial testing and people knew that the results would only be shared with you in a big number format, they wouldn't know individually.
Right.
But now you're gonna go back to their house for a second test.
Right. So, that's a great question.
Do you anticipate some people say, well, I don't want to come to my house a second time?
That's right. So let me just, that's a great question and what you're saying is, well, wait a second now. They, we said to them initially that the individual results are private and now we're volunteering to go and sort of know who they are. So in the email, um, we grappled with this as a team, that's a great question. Um, and what happened is, in the email that people received about the retest, we volunteered to do this, but we said, um, uh, in this, in our note, we said that if you decide to do this, then your identity will be revealed to the committee members. There's no way we can do the retest without revealing our.
Well, the only thing you could do is sort of like the firing squad, you know, where there's some blanks in there so you don't know who fired the blank. So you could collect some water samples that were dummy, dummy samples, so you wouldn't know who's who.
So, um, yeah, I would not really want our water study committee work to be compared to a fire.
Well. Sorry.
But, no, 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 I'm teasing you, um, out. The one important fact I forgot to mention, and forgive me, is that the retest, the cost of the kit for the retest is fifteen dollars. And that is something that we are not bearing as a committee and the town does not bear that cost. So the first choice, the, uh, participant who's tested positive for total coliform has to make is are they willing to buy the kit? And the kit is fifteen dollars, so. Does that help answer your question? We're not gonna go village-wide and do the test again, only the people who have been impacted, only the ones who are willing to purchase the kit. And if you purchase the kit, you are able to take the test yourself and mail it yourself, if that's what you want to do. Or you can call Kim and set up an appointment and we'll come and do the test for you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was, I was sort of supporting you a little bit. I could see where somebody, the second time around, it might, I don't know if I want somebody else.
No, no, we're lovely to have in your home. But, you know, that does, that does make the point that I tried to make earlier.
Right.
People did welcome us into their home and allow us to take the samples of their water and that was a very generous thing for them to do and that's why we wanted to spread our gratitude to the select board for those people who were willing to do that.
Cool.
Any other public comment?
Any other questions?
Just a question, Suzanne.
Yes.
Is this second test qualitative or quantitative test?
It is a quantitative test, that's an actual question. So instead of being binary in the first test, which was testing for either some or no coliform, this is called an enumeration test and it will actually identify the amount of coliform in the sample. So it's a different test kit and it will be a more quantitative rather than, uh, binary test. Do any of the members of the committee want to say anything that I omitted, please join in?
I would just add that the policy is the same, that, um, the committee is only gonna release results in the aggregate from how can identify individual results.
I'm not worried about the committee, I just wonder how people.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yes, Frances.
So if it's a really low percentage of coliform, you can still drink your water?
So, the.
That's a yes or no?
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a, that's a great question. The quality of the water and an individual situation is really between the participant in your communication with the Department of Health because they are the experts in the field and our committee does not take on giving advice about whether to drink the water or not. In the information that has been received by the people who tested positive, there is a form from the Department of Health that talks about the quality of the drinking water in the meantime that you're doing the retest. The retest could be, could show false positives. So there could be nothing wrong, you know? So it's our advice to the committee that each individual participant makes a judgment call about your own water supply in keeping with the instructions and the, the, the information that's come from the Department of Health.
Well, I, as a board member, I'd like to say thank you to you, your committee and your efforts.
Exactly.
It's a lot of work and I appreciate it.
You're welcome, we have an amazing team, as I say, and, uh, so thank you.
Thank you.
We feel that it's a very important, uh, small thing we can do to help people understand the safety of our drinking water.
Thank you.
Suzanne, how about the public, like, they did the chapel, they were up there.
Yes.
So that comes back.
It's one of the fifty-six sites, so it would come back to the individual who's.
So, if, that should be retested if there is some, because it's a public building and what is the fifteen dollars? What I'm asking for is.
So the fifteen dollars in that case would come from the church. If the church owns the chapel and that would be an expense for you, Joan, I'm gonna personally let them know. I'm sure they would because of the, the use of the chapel.
The only thing probably to add to that whole thing is if, if it is done on the twenty-ninth, the shipping then is, is essentially free to the homeowners.
Yes.
If they decide not to do it on the twenty-ninth and they wanna do it on the first or the fifth or whatever of September because it fits their schedule, they then have a, uh, a postage charge, which could be upwards of twenty-five dollars or something like that because that has to fit a very defined shipping schedule to Lee Grafton to get to Burlington uh, within that twenty-four hour timeframe. So if, if they don't do it on the twenty-ninth, there's going to be a, a, a charge over and above the fifteen dollars to buy the kit.
That's why we felt, and, and actually, the Department of Health encouraged our participants to use and avail themselves of the water study committee help if they are willing to forego their privacy. For that reason, because we felt that fifteen dollars is likely not to be an onerous charge for people in our community, although we instructed the Department of Health that if anyone says to them, I would like to do the test, but the fifteen dollars is something I cannot afford, that they would let us know that and we would figure out a way to pay that fifteen dollars. But we thought that adding on the thirty dollars for the overnight shipment gets it up there to possibly an onerous level for some. So that's why, to Stan's point, we volunteered to drive the samples up to Burlington on the afternoon of the twenty-ninth. And that's why Kim is setting up these appointments for us so that we get our appointments done in time to deliver the samples to Burlington in the required timeframe. And there will be no charge to the participants who retest for that service.
So we basically have to get that done by eleven-thirty.
They have to get it done by eleven-thirty and Kim's in charge of that, so you can know.
And, and one of the other points also about encouraging the committee to do the testing is we're looking for consistency.
Rather than, you know, somebody contaminating and not doing it properly, which, we're not saying any of that
were called back for the second contamination wasn't contaminated just by that purpose or the lab. So there's a number of things I could have caused this.
We're hoping that the letter that comes with this kit says do not open it.
It does, it says that right in the letter.
You don't wanna open it, you don't wanna look at it, you don't touch it.
And, and those who have called so far have had that conversation exactly with them. Now, you're not going to open this box, right? Oh, no, I'm gonna hold it for you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, um, I have something on another business, um, it's the health officer. I know you're here, Rich. And Kathy, I, I would encourage Rich, Kathy and whoever else from this, maybe another person on the select board, me, and discuss what the issues are and then bring them back at a subsequent meeting rather than having a meeting discussing the issues because there, there's a lot of, you know, there are, there's a lot to discuss and maybe,
Right.
you know, since you've kind of spearheaded it, I don't know who else wants to volunteer to do that.
I know, I know, two weeks ago I brought it up that each of the board members here need to really look at the, the materials that we sent out. If you have questions, there's a lot to it and, um, to have a, a committee come together and then get back to you.
Right, so does anybody wanna volunteer to, to work along with Kathy and, and Rich? I'd say they'd be happy, but I just, I'm just so flat out right now, I can't do it unless you wanna wait until, until September.
If, if nobody else, if nobody else.
And I did ask Rich if he had anybody in mind to just add their two cents to, at least be aware of what, um, the state is requiring the town health officer to do.
Yeah, and, and one of the reasons is that we're coming up on the budgetary process and, you know, right now, we have a very small budget for the health officer, but if you're talking, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars for this whole thing, then that has to be discussed at the budget and that's certainly gonna have a tax consequence to the town, so. So we need, I mean, there needs to be some discussion so that we can kind of deal with where the town wants to go with, with, with the new regulations and, and, and what you have in mind as well, since.
What did you think about a committee and you wanted to pull a couple of people in from the theater, is that what you were thinking?
Well, community members would be nice to have. They don't have to have a health background, but it's nice to have their input. And also we have people in rescue and also people in the department that may be interested too.
Why don't you give me a couple of suggestions, drop me an email and I'll contact whoever.
Now, is this gonna be a subcommittee of the select board?
Yes.
So the meeting's gotta be warm?
Yes. Yes.
The whole, the whole shebang?
Yes.
Minutes taken.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that choice. See how I can do it any other way.
I think so.
Okay, any other business?
I don't, would I, is Stan gonna be on or not?
I'll do it.
Okay, so Kathy, Stan and Rich. And Rich will find someone. Is that right with you? Yeah, I think you should probably give me suggestions if you want me to contact the people, that's fine.
I can talk.
Yeah, you and, you and Rich work it out and I'll just be on.
Any people, what are you thinking?
Any other business, Al has some other business. At the, at the last, um, select board meeting. At the last select board meeting, I asked for a renewed vote of confidence or move forward on the village park. And so since the last meeting, Josh and I walked the park with Rick White, a state forester who has recreational responsibility as well as typical forestry stuff. And I just wanted to summarize that first off, that we did go and look. We, his, his thoughts were the lower trail, the red trail, which we talked about making. We don't want to do ADA because that really ups the expense and liability and stuff. But to make that a less challenging trail, that, there's some things we could do to improve it. He found additional hazard trees that should be cut. He didn't think cutting all the big pines was the thing to do, but just hazard trees that needed to be picked out. But one of the very first comments that he made was when he pulled up and he was waiting for us because we met at the town office and walked up. He says, "Where do you park?" And, and he was parked at the foot of the gate, which is about the only place. And the fact that you have to hike up that hill and there's really isn't, the signage in the beginning isn't really good to get you started. So as we walked and discussed, one of the things that we talked about was possibly using the grade that you would increase elevation as you went up Fire Pond Road. And then if we could put a small timber sale maybe up, up above the, where the trails are, but there's 55 acres there, so there's more land there. So if you work up, higher up on a slope, put in a couple one acre, two acre patch cuts for wildlife and for birding and bring that timber down to a log landing that would be partway up before you get to Fire Pond, partway up. That, that log landing later could be graded, smooth. That becomes your parking lot so that people can pull up. There's a bulletin board there. There's, there's a well-defined map that shows the trail system. He said what they've been doing is using the Okemo Mountain sign shop and they build a map, they send it to them. And it's, it's not silkscreen, but it's sort of like that where there is that image on metal and then you put that on. So it's a really well taken care of sign and put it onto a, the ward or some signage. It would require, you know, a culvert, it would require some preparation. It's not all going to happen right away. But that, that would solve multiple problems.
To their service.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I just want to give you some feedback that we, we went and looked and we're thinking about it. It's going to take some time to pull some things together. He gave me some names and contacts. There are some grants available. And so I'm going to turn that stuff over to Bill and let Bill be the grant go-getter guy. So just wanted to let you know there's some feedback.
Couldn't the improvement association, you think, help us out at all?
Well, I think there's going to be opportunity for several people to help. Oh, oh, and one, and, and one other thing I should bring to mind, the gazebo that's there, which if somebody has all the history, maybe Joan has the history on that, we looked at the gazebo and actually had somebody look at it that was a restoration person for the Smithsonian Museum. And he looked at it and said, "It really is too far gone." Too far gone. He says, "To restore it would be extremely expensive at, at this point." You know, maybe several years ago, it would have been more cost-effective, but it would be really a challenge and hard to do at this point. But you could replicate it. We could replicate it. I have some other ideas of, of down where the little fireplace is and the little picnic area, a little shelter there that would complement the picnic area and opportunity for the kids to use that as an outdoor classroom. So just give you some feedback. Josh?
That was my first time I've been there. I thought it was really nice and limited, limited effort to get the trail itself cleaned up and the picnic area cleaned up. And it could be, it could be starting to be used again. It's certainly usable now, but it's, the picnic table's far gone and the fireplace will need a bit of work, but it's, it's minimal effort, it could be, it could be going again.
Can I see the school?
Any other business?
Um, road signs. There was a lot of traffic on Parker Hill on Sunday. Out of staters coming up Parker Hill and wanting to go to Misty Land. They made it. They went on that shovel bill track. I don't know how many went on your drive.
I also two.
Um, is there any way you could have a road sign that says no autos or no?
No exits or something.
No outlets.
No outlets. Because I need, I need one too on your road. You wouldn't want the traffic in there to get to park or not. Take the GPS draws it that way.
Yours is no outlet. Oh, okay, okay. That's a class four road. Oh, okay. So if they want to drive through, they can drive through unless you want to limit traffic on a class four road.
I put them on. They can't make it through there anymore.
No.
I'll never make it through Doug Road. I get them, they actually come up my driveway because they look at Doug Road and it's just, mine is the well-worn portion, so they end up right at my. Actually, I come nose to nose with three cars the other day going up.
We're still trying to go through Burgess Cemetery and pass the cemetery.
Oh, sure.
And there's nothing there. It's the GPS.
It's the GPS.
Yeah, that's right.
We put a sign that says if you've got your GPS wrong, you can turn around.
I told them not to follow their GPS, but they didn't like that.
I don't know, but there's a lot of, there's probably five or six places like that in town. If you wanted to do it, we could mark them all, but they'd have to be identified. And then, I don't know, that you're taking some responsibility for it. It's a class four road. And if they look at a map, it's a class four road.
What if it doesn't go anywhere?
It says a class four road is not maintained. So they should be aware that it's a not maintained road.
But maintain the not going.
If they choose to drive out there because their GPS told them to and their car gets stuck there, that's their responsibility. They should, you got to get towed out. Happened to me.
Jamie Gerri came out with his thing and HM, the oil company, I forget what's HMV or HM somebody, they had, they must had a hefty bill because he had a brick excavator and they were in there and they were, so.
Please tell the company that they've got to stop charting the other product.
But, but the GPS at Avi Park Drive goes over to Hinkelman Brook. If you look at, if you look at the GPS, that's exactly what it says. And we've tried to change it twice to Google and, and whoever the other one, it still hasn't been changed in its way over the year. They're supposed to work with Vermont GIS. Vermont GIS has, BGIS has all that information, but the GPS people won't work with it. So, but they are the people in the state they're supposed to be working for. So it isn't our responsibility. We've done all we can. And our map hasn't shown your road going through forever. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we get, well, not so much now, but, but during the flooding season, it's probably seven or eight come up. So, any other business?
I'll be going to talk about the date of the next meeting.
Yeah. We're listed as Monday the 2nd, but I don't think anybody wants to do that. So they want to put the meeting on Tuesday the 3rd. Are you here? I don't care, I can go on the 2nd, but I mean, traditionally we have been changing how the meeting, so it's up to the board. I can do the 2nd, I can't do the 3rd if that makes it.
I wouldn't be available the 3rd either.
I can do the 2nd.
So if everybody can do the 2nd, what else do us? Just do it. All right. So we don't give a motion, we'll just keep it at the regular days. Okay, so we can adjourn, we're going to adjourn, we need to move into executive session.
You march in.
Yeah, we need a motion to move into executive session. Are you inviting anybody? Phil. I'm going to invite, uh, Phil.